Yep.
Yep.
Nice. Well, I'm anxious to see how Saturday goes.
Yeah.
We have our home tournament.
Are there any good teams?
Um, I really don't know.
Gilbertville's in there.
Don Basko's coming. Decorah, never played Decorah. Iowa City Liberty is brand new.
Right, right.
So Waterloo, we should, we should beat them.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll see.
Yeah.
See how it goes.
Hey, well, at least they painted it good.
And I think really, I think Saturday was good for, like, for Kylissa.
Here's my bottle.
Just fun to see her.
Oh, not meant to throw it away, dang it.
Um, just.
Yeah, yeah, enjoying it more.
Sometimes I get.
That's gross. Go throw it out.
But it's my favorite water bottle.
Go throw that out.
Oh, that's disgusting.
That's disgusting. Charles, why did you ask to see it? Holy.
Wow. Guess we're gonna start. There you go.
That was a little loud and rebellious.
I didn't want to disappoint you guys on my last board meeting.
It really is getting thrown away.
Weird elders.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, FYI, for the Schwarzenbruber, I know you guys wanted to go. They're doing the, um, presentation. Jane's gonna go and help present it on the 19th. And I'll send that out. I'll send that date out to you. Ram is not here, no. Yes.
Can you help me? Why can I?
Press this.
So mine was not allergies.
I'm pushing the wrong blue button.
Yep.
Thank you. And then just to get to my blue button. No, she actually.
Angie, if you press your blue button.
I am not feeling well.
Press, yeah.
Okay, and you all, I have a copy of the contract. Jane's contract, if anybody wants to see it. But I told Pam to not print eight copies of it tonight. If you guys want it, I'll pass it around.
It's in here?
It's not.
Okay.
But I have it. So I didn't want it to be, I don't want, you know, her contract shouldn't be.
Flowing around.
Flowing, you know what I mean? I guess it's private. Jane? Press your, that button, and then your computer will come on. Okay, is everybody ready? Six o'clock on my alarm. Oh, I should probably grab this. I have sicknessure stuff. Mike or Angie, which one of you wants to read the mission statement? You did it last time. Okay, Angie, your turn, because you only have, this is the last time you get to read it.
Mission statement.
Not yet, just wait.
The Waterloo. Commits to a commitment.
Do it, do it, I dare you. Do it.
Don't dare me.
All right, is everybody ready?
Sue's trying to dare me.
Lyle, everybody good? Ready? All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Directors to order, and welcome you here this evening, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, I'll ask that Angela weakly read our mission statement. This will be the final time that she gets to read it. I'm not gonna make you cry yet, but.
I'm not gonna cry.
Not for the mission statement, anyway.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every child will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Angela. The next item on our agenda this evening is some of the best stuff that we get to do as board members. We get to, and administrators, we get to acknowledge and celebrate the Schwarzenbruber Award. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for a little more information, and we're gonna take some pictures, and maybe we're gonna cheer.
Yeah.
I'm cheering, you bet, absolutely. Well, the Schwarzenbruber Award was established a long, quite a while ago, in honor of Dr. Arlis Schwarzenbruber, who was our superintendent. And as the story goes, he led the district through some very, very challenging times. And so when he finished his tenure as the superintendent, they established, the school board established an honor, an award in his name. And it's called the Schwarzenbruber Award, which can be quite a mouthful, but it really was to signify, or to identify, the, the school building that had the greatest growth in Iowa assessment scores in reading and math from the year prior. So we always say, while it might not be the highest, you know, might not be the school with the highest percent proficient, it was the school that had the most growth, which is something that we absolutely like to honor. So we have had, this actually has been going on, we have winners since 2002, 2003 school years, so I don't know how many numbers that is, but that's quite a few. And so this year, we were very, very excited. We did, we did, for the viewers who might be watching this, we actually did announce this award winner at our opening day, and it is Central Middle School. Yay! So as, so as part of that recognition, we actually do it kind of in a series. We just keep celebrating for, for a month or so. So we make the announcement, we made the announcement at the opening day on, on August 24th, and then we actually have them come, the, we have many, for the viewers who might be able to see, maybe the cameras can flash into the audience and show. We have quite a few people who are here from Central Middle School to help receive this award. And then we will do a formal presentation of the award to the students and the faculty at Central Middle School. And I don't know that exact date, I know we're.
September 19th.
September 19th. September 19th. We will be present at Central to, to actually bring, we will bring out the, the trophy at that point in time, and we'll do a rec, a formal ceremony at that point in time. But we actually kind of just, we just recognize the staff in stages, and tonight is the stage where they actually get to come before the school board. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Shanley at that point in time, and I think they have, yeah, some things they wanna say.
Absolutely, and I think Tara Thomas would like to come up. I, I don't know who's all here from Central, I wanna get you all up here, and I've got a, I mean, I know, but I, I can see you all, but I have a little something for you, too.
We'd like to invite anyone here representing Central Middle School to please come up, so we can get your photo with the big trophy, and I think Shanley has a plaque as well, so we'll get a joint photo.
Yeah, please come up, Central Middle School. And actually, if you wanna just come through the gate, and we'll just, it's just easier up here, there's a lot more room. Blue. Don't drop it. Don't. He reminds me so much. I have a nephew named Ross.
Oh, Ross.
And Ross reminds me so much of my Ross, it's not even funny.
Just straight heads down. Okay. Just a second, I don't want everybody to sit down. I would just like you, if you would please, for us, to tell us who you are and your role at Central.
Right, and while you're all getting ready to do that. Yeah. Yes, everybody needs to see you. Don't get nervous.
I'm Holly Jansen, and I teach math at Central.
I'm Paula Toma, I teach sixth grade Title I.
I'm Ashley Jung, I teach sixth grade literacy.
I'm Megan Zimmerman, I'm an instructional strategist at Central.
I'm Becky Mohorn, and I teach sixth grade literacy.
I'm Bethany Durant, I'm the literacy coach.
Jessica Magnuson, I teach sixth and seventh grade science.
Timothy Hopper, I teach seventh grade social studies and science.
Luke Rogers, sixth grade instructional strategist.
John Dennis, I do career and technology exploratory.
I'm Amy Kemp, I teach sixth grade math.
Kevin Kemp, eighth grade math.
Mike Thomas, Assistant Principal of Central Middle School. Been waiting a while to hold this trophy.
Kaycee Jenkins, Assistant Principal.
Mike Landers, Assistant Principal.
Ross Bauer, Principal. And if I may, I was, I was fortunate enough to get to meet this whole staff recently, within the last few months, and I interviewed each of them and asked a few questions to try to get to know them and try to get to know the building. One of the questions that I asked across the board was, what are you most proud of as a Central staff member? And easily half of the people I talked to immediately said, our students' test scores from last year. It was a, it was something that they're so proud of, because they know all the work that went into it on both sides of the desk. So I just thought that was worth sharing, because it's a proud staff, and rightfully so. And I'm very grateful to be a part of it.
Excellent. If I may, I just wanna echo all of that sentiment as well. We at the board table know what it takes to really move the needle on student achievement, and what an amazing accomplishment you all made this past year. And I just wondered if any of you would be willing to share, I know you may not be able to pinpoint it to one exact thing, but is there something that's happening in your building, or that you're seeing in your classroom, that you can attribute this growth to, and that you, that you could point to and share with us? Because I know we'd really love to hear it. Not to put anybody on the spot like I just did. Amy, I know you can do it. Yeah. Amy, come on. Will you come up here, Amy, and talk into the mic?
We have two, yes, both of you.
Or Kevin, or anybody else. What has? Yeah, I thought she was.
Ms. Maggason.
In the back, come on up. Come on up. Come on up.
Well, I would just like to say, I think the reason that our scores are continuing to grow every year and year is because we have a staff that believes. And we believe in our students, and I think we instill that in our students, and the more we work, the harder they work, and that's, I think, why we're seeing the results. We're not giving up on them.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. You did a great job. That's hard to follow.
I would echo that sentiment, and I think part of it is, we've established a culture with our students that they are capable of anything that they wanna put their minds to and work towards, so getting that culture ingrained in the staff and the students.
That's wonderful. Thanks.
Um, I was just going to say that in my four years at Central, the relationships that teachers are able to build with the students is outstanding. I think that the, or the students really grab on to teachers who invest in their life outside of school, and that's really happening at Central. So when we tried to push, you know, doing well on tests, that means something, or doing well just in class in general, it's, they're hanging on to it, and they're running with it, and they're doing a really good job, so.
Well, I just wanted to thank you all and keep up the good work, and I wish I had a sixth grade student at Central. It sounds like the whole sixth grade team is here, that's awesome, but. And also, I would, I think we'd be amiss to also thank Ms. Richards, who is now gone, who was your leadership last year, and so she's left the district, but just to add that a little bit, too. So thank you all for your good work.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
I just wanted to add, like, I, as a parent of a former sixth grader, this sixth grade staff, these guys have heard I've cried a thousand times about how wonderful you are, so thank you for what you do for our kids.
Now you're making Auntie cry. Well, we appreciate you all being here tonight, and we look forward to continuing the celebration. As Dr. Lindeman said, it's kind of a month-long, we're gonna stretch this out as long as we can, and we'll see, some of us will see you for sure. I know she and I will see you on this 19th, is that right? The 19th of September, and we'll make sure that that very heavy eagle gets there. Unless you're taking it tonight, is somebody taking it tonight? No. I'm gonna bring it out on September, yep. I'll bring it out on the 19th. Excellent, so. Yeah, way to go, Central. We are very proud of you. Good job. Way to go. Good job. Yay. Anything else? I'm gonna cheer one more time. And thanks for all coming tonight. So, um, the next item on our agenda, interestingly enough, is also a board celebration, or a celebration for Central Middle School. And this is a new partnership recognition, and I would invite Tara Thomas forward to introduce our new partner in ed.
As one of the Central teachers mentioned, the involvement extends beyond the school building to reach out to our community partnerships, and Central is among many districts, many of our schools that are growing the list of partners in education. So tonight, we'd like to ask Ross Bauer, the Central Middle School Principal, to come up, and representatives, if you are here, from CH Mason World Missions, the latest addition to formally be recognized as a partner with Central. Among the other partners, we should acknowledge YMCA, Hy-Vee, Upper Iowa, John Deere PEC, and Payne AME Church, as well as Viking Pump. So the list continues to grow for Central as they strengthen their community outreach. We'd love to have you come up, Mr. Bauer, as well as the representative here to say a few words.
I just wanted to say thank you to Alicia Hollingsworth, who's here tonight. She and I met, oh, two, three weeks ago, maybe a month, time flies, but recently we met, and just had a really good conversation about how we can have some mutual benefit, mutually support each other. I wanna make sure that we're benefiting from our partners in education as a school, but thinking ways that we can give back to our partners as well, so that it is truly a reciprocal relationship. So I'm looking forward to working with Alicia and everybody at her organization this year to, to give back, and definitely, we have some things in mind, even right off the bat here, we're gonna work on some tutoring opportunities that they're providing that'll benefit our students, so look to see where we can grow from there. So thank you, Alicia.
I would just like to make a correction. It'd be with RH Miracle Central, I do do a dual role within our church community, but this will be a collaboration with the RH Miracle Central Church. And so I wanna say that I am a product of Central. I went there, graduated in 1984, and my son went to middle school at Central. And so it's great to see that we're able to partner again with Central, you know, a place that I already know of, and it looks like you all are off to a great start already, and so we're just looking forward to even enhancing things as we go on through the school year to help with tutoring, SESA, and any other project that we can help with.
Thanks, Alicia. Thank you both very much for being here tonight. We're always excited when we bring new partners on board, so thank you very much for that. The next item on our agenda is the Central Rivers AEA District Representative Election, and I'm going to actually turn this over to our Board Secretary, Pam Arndorfer, but I'm, before I get the motion on the table, is that the Board of Education casts its vote for Brian Burton as the Director VIII District Representative to the Central Rivers Area Education Agency Board of Directors. Thanks, Mike. And a second?
Second.
And then discussion and/or background, I will turn it over to Ms. Arndorfer.
Okay, thank you. So this is the, every four years, Central Rivers, which formerly AEA 267, has their director district election. So this year, Brian Burton was the only one who, the only candidate. He was representative last year as well, so we are just affirming that Waterloo has 100% of this district.
And as you said, he is the only person representative who filed, so.
Correct.
In years past, sometimes we've had to make a choice as a board, but this evening, we're basically just ratifying.
Affirming that, yes, correct.
So, is there any questions for anyone? Then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. I assume somebody will let Mr. Burton know?
Yes, we'll let Mr. Burton know, and then file the papers with AEA tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is information from individuals and delegations, and before I read my, my little pitch, I was just gonna double-check and see if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board. All right, then seeing no one, I will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of three items. It is the minutes of the August 28th, 2017 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, and bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings. Are there any items that members wish to have removed?
Item E, echo, please.
Item E? Anything else? Then can I get a motion to put items D and F from the consent agenda on the table, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion over items D or F? All right, then seeing none, those in favor of approving those two items on the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item E on page 10.
I move the Board of Education to approve the personnel items as listed.
And a second?
Second.
I'll let you guys flip for it. Thank you. And discussion, go ahead, Lyle, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, just kinda curious, is enrollment stabilized to the point where we're finished with any changes in terms of adding teachers, switching teachers? Where do we, where do we think we're at?
Want me to go?
I'll start it, and Bev can give you all the rest of the scoop. Enrollment has stabilized, absolutely. So at the elementary level and the middle school level, if people remember, a few weeks ago when we had a board meeting, I had mentioned that we were still missing some kids, and we were actually putting out a plea for, for parents and, and community members to make sure students got to school, arrived in school. So that has really stabilized. We did make a few changes, and I believe we are done with those. We still monitor that all the time, just to make sure. We did have a couple of sections in a couple of buildings that we needed to do what we call a cap on the enrollment, so we're, we're right at that, that point, and so we'll look for other places for students to go, but, which we, we certainly have, have things like that. We've done that for a number of years, but for the most part, we're, we're in good shape. We, we did move a couple, and I think we're good. The places where we may still gain a few students would be at the high school level, but there's a lot more flexibility in teachers and the staff there. So I, I feel like we're in pretty good shape for staffing. Bev, what would you add?
I think we're good. I spoke with Student Services today, there are a couple places, as Jane said, that we capped, and so they wanted to look direction in terms of what they should do if additional students come, and so we're watching the numbers. Every day, I pull the report, we look at the numbers, so we're not gonna add students to get a building in trouble. So we're watching it very carefully. I think it's looking good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I would agree. Anything further? All right, then all those in favor of approving the personal appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. So that concludes the consent agenda items, and that will take us then to item G, which is on page 21. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education enter into a memorandum of understanding with Vision to Learn as presented. Thanks, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Angela. And we will get this motion now that it's on the table, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lindeman to talk a little bit more about this. This is a, a great thing to help provide vision for our students. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Did you already have it on the table? I did. I got it. I was waiting for a vote, a motion, I guess. I missed that, I'm sorry. I was flipping pages, and I missed that, I apologize. Totally fine, I can talk about it, too. No, the, the Vision to Learn is an organization that approached us this summer. Darren Hannah, who is our Director of Elementary Education, has really taken a, a strong lead on this, and I believe Dr. McDulty has played it, has weighed in on some of this, too. So at the elementary level, when we were approached by Vision to Learn, they had, it is an organization that works with elementary schools that are, that have a significant percentage of students who are free and reduced lunches, and eligible. So they will come in, and they will do a screening for the students, a very quick screening, and then if students don't pass the quick screener, they will actually go back and they will get an onsite, they have a little mobile unit where they will actually do a, a more in-depth screening, vision screening, and then they will fit the students for glasses if they do not have glasses, and they will do all of this at no charge. They actually have private funders that will fund this, and so it really seemed like a no-brainer. The cost to Waterloo schools is really not monetary amount, but it really is, there is some loss in instructional time for that, that quick screener. When we worked with them, we were asking questions about other organizations and, that had done this, other schools that had done this, and there, there's a pretty quick clip that they can run students through the, the screener. Each student, it takes about two to maybe three minutes to do the initial screener. And of course, then there's a little bit of time getting down to the spot to, you know, to do that, a little bit of walking time in the hallway. But for just a few minutes, to, to make sure that kids can actually see, is, is a smart move, I think, on our part. There, there actually is a research study that is, is linked to this, where they will be tracking the number of students that are, that need glasses and are eligible for glasses. And then they actually anonymously, not, not by student name by any means, but they will, they will watch scores of students. There is a lot of research behind students not being able to see appropriately or adequately, and their, their reading scores. And so there's, there are some stats that we will see if they hold true, some, some percentages, they will say that, you know, out of the students in the, in the building, I believe, you know, they will say 15% of them may need, I think up to 15% may need glasses. And so we're really excited to do this. There are just a few other districts in Iowa that have done this. We did talk with Des Moines, Des Moines had a few schools that were able to do this. This will not be district-wide, it will only be, we have five buildings that are eligible for this, so we will proceed with that, and we'll certainly track it. But I, I actually think this is a really good thing. The cost is minimal, and the benefits are great. And I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
So you had mentioned the cost a couple times, Jane, is there a, a kind of a rough figure that that might be, or?
The cost to Waterloo schools is nothing. The cost to the organization, I believe, oh gosh, I'm, I'm drawing a, if I pulled it up on my notes, I could give you a very exact number, but it, it was, I believe that they have private donations in the areas of, I believe, 40 to 40, for, for some reason, 47,000 is, is jumping out at me, but of course, it's the amount of classes, and it depends on the number of students who are eligible. I can certainly get that number for you, but it was, you know, it was, is a, tens of thousands of dollars who, that would be donated through private donors. And there are many people who, you know, and I, I don't think very many of the donors are actually from Iowa, this is a national program. We just happen to be eligible for it, so it made sense to take advantage.
Great, and I just thought, to reiterate, there's no cost to the district.
No cost to the district.
And I guess if, you know, people, we did not choose the schools either, they were chosen by the organization, so.
There's a, yeah, there's some eligibility guidelines, and so we do have the five schools, and I could, I could list those if, if you're interested in knowing what the five are.
I think we have it.
You wanna list them out? Well, I thought maybe the viewers might want to know what those are. You wanna read them, Sue?
Sure. Cunningham, Lincoln, Irving, Lowell, and Highland. So those are the five that were chosen. So just, just so that, for clarification, if anyone asks, we didn't choose the schools, they were brought to the program, so if you have a student at one of the other schools, you know, we apologize, but these are the five schools they, they chose.
Thank you.
Are all students within each of these schools tested?
They are. Right, it is a K-5 program, and so they will, they will do the initial screening for everyone, the, the one that's just a very quick screener, and then there will be a certain percentage. Well, any student who needs the follow-up exam will get that. Of course, parents have to sign off on that, a parent permission would be obtained. We would never do that without parent permission, but we'll do the, the further exam and then fit the students for glasses, and so. And, and they say about 15% of students may, you know, need that follow-up exam, the more in-depth exam, but of course, it varies by building, and that's a, that's a national average.
It seems high.
It does seem high.
Thank you.
And the other thing to think about is, for the other buildings, I know that McElroy has given some dollars.
Absolutely.
That if teachers or administrators or someone recognizes that there's a student who might be in need of such thing, we, there's dollars that we could use to make sure that they get those services as well.
Right. And I should also just add, I think for publicity, I think it's probably important to, to note that we had, we actually have many eye doctors in the area, that Cedar Valley Medical Specialists have come forward to donate time on their own, to, to come[1755.83] that Cedar Valley Medical Specialists have come forward to donate time on their own, to, to come forward and to help with the screenings, to help with the exams. They will be staffing the mobile units and of course, with school staff. I don't want anybody to think that the school staff wouldn't be involved, but we will be there with them. And donating their expertise and their, their medical expertise to, to help our students. And I think that's a great thing. It's, it's a great way to get our community involved and we sure appreciate them being at the table with us.
And they are local, which is great.
They are local.
Great partnership, so. All right, is there anything further? Sounds like a great program, so. With that, I would ask all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's contract. And I'm very happy to have this on our agenda tonight. I feel like this is sort of the summation of, of a couple of months of stuff. So I'm going to get the motion on the table and then I'll continue. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the proposed three-year contract with the superintendent through June 30th of 2020.
So moved.
Thanks Sue, and a second? Thanks Mike. And as I said, you know, we did our annual review with Dr. Lindeman way back in July. And, and so I feel like it's been a couple of months in the making. We were waiting on some metrics in order to, to get this contract together tonight. And one of the things I want to talk about a little bit before I, I turn it over to the rest of my board members is that review and how positive it was and how completely confident our board is in the direction and the leadership that's being provided by Dr. Lindeman. But I also want to talk tonight about her actual contract and the extension to add it and make sure that it's a very strong vote of confidence to make, take that out to the third year. But also that the pay-per-performance metric and the pay-per-performance piece that we do to, it's the only, it's the sole meaning, the way of compensation that we have for Dr. Lindeman. She doesn't get a straight raise or a straight percentage. What she gets is a percentage of a pool of money. And so her raise this coming year will be just over, it's $8,400 based on the metrics that have been met. And so I just want to say again, I think it's pretty groundbreaking that we have this set of metrics that are based on, you know, driven by student achievement and, and a lot of other things. And that we're one of the few districts in the state, I believe, to base your performance solely on that. You know, your raise is based just on that pool, so. But I also want to talk just a little bit about the actual review that we had. You know, some of the things that came out time and time again in our conversation with Dr. Lindeman were how impressed we all are with her leadership skills. You know, we, we navigated through an interesting time with our labor negotiations and some of the reorganization with Chapter 20. We have continued to work on high school reform and work on our Waterloo Career Center and developing those pathways. I think all of us would agree that Dr. Lindeman has a wonderful open-door policy. And the amount of people in this community that she meets with and talks to on a weekly, on a weekly basis, I'm completely impressed. Because, I mean, if you call and ask, you'll set up a meeting. And, and I think we all very much appreciate that communication and that leadership from you. So, so with that, I am, I'm very content. I also want to say, last year, you did forego your raise and I'm very happy and you have very much deserved this. And so I'm very happy to present that for the board tonight for consideration, so. And with that, I'll stop babbling and turn it over to the rest of the board, so. I don't know.
Yeah, and I'd just like to share a little bit of history and perspective. Because $8,400 is, is a large raise, but I think it's warranted for several reasons. First of all, a little bit, I'm going to give you a couple of numbers relative to district size and relative pay. And I'll preface that by saying I'm not personally a believer that we need to be in lockstep if we're the eighth biggest district. We need to pay the eighth most. Some districts, I think, have been influenced by some recruiters, consultants that, that like to kind of play a one-upsmanship game in terms of salaries. So everybody wants to be above average and all of a sudden, the whole scale escalates a little bit. But we're in unique circumstances, as Shanley just said. So first of all, we are the seventh largest district at the time and Dr. Lindeman's pay is 19th. So again, that gap doesn't necessarily bother, but we have to, we, we need some semblance of fairness there. But the reason it is where it is, is upon hiring Dr. Lindeman, we, we waived the traditional requirement of a superintendent having to have three or four years' experience in a large district. So that was one of the reasons the base pay was set a little low. But the other part of the deal at the same time was, we promised that our performance pay plan, which was in existence at that time, would provide an extraordinary opportunity for significant pay increases as a reward for strong performance. So that system existed at that time. And the board each year rearranges a little bit the, the particular goals and the weighting factors. The reason we are where we are today is because almost half of the weighting board decision is on achievement, academic achievement. So you just saw Central, what they've done on academic achievement. The other significant part is our K-3, what's that program called? Has been early literacy, has shown the most improvement in the state for two years in a row. So two years ago, and I think the number was, the state average was 67% proficient and we were 37. So we were 30 points under the average. This last year, the state increased to 70 and I think we were 62. So we're eight. So in two years, we went from 30 points under to eight points under. There's a number of other achievements that drove this, but primarily it was academic improvement. Like I say, at Central, K-3, I believe, middle school reading. I don't remember all of them. But in any event, we were relatively, we'll begin with, this raise, if nobody else in the, in the state gets a raise, we'd raise our superintendent's pay from 19th to 14th. But because everybody else is going to get a raise too, I suspect we'll still end up at 16th or 17th. But next year, there's another opportunity for a significant raise based on strong performance, which is what we, we hope for. So it's, it's warranted because of the strong academic performance this year.
Thanks, Lyle.
Well, and I, I just wanted to echo as far as the review with Jane in that being a superintendent is not an easy job. And Jane has handled it very professionally and, and being a mom, plus being a superintendent, makes it a little even more precarious. So in that, she's handled it very, very well. And I think that one of the underlying factors of Jane that impresses me is that she always keeps the motto in line that is it best for kids. And I really respect that, that the authority may not be that the mom or dad like it, or that the teacher likes it, or the principal likes it, but what's best for kids is her underlying motto. And I appreciate that and I, I just, I know you have integrity and, and you follow that standard and, and that is, that is well worthy of the raise you've been offered, so.
I would just, I would just like to add that the other thing that I think is super important to, to note is that Jane inherited the opportunity to look at a different tax structure to make something happen quickly. And instead of saying, nope, since we didn't get the tax dollars to do, let's figure out how we can get this done. And the Waterloo Career Center is what is going to be best so that all of our students have the opportunity to achieve well and to meet that mission statement. Doesn't mean you have to go to a four-year college, you don't have to go to a two-year college. You have to have some type of formal education to be able to go out and get the jobs that we need in our community. And we've looked at what is the need in the community, what jobs are coming available? And she's made sure that we stick to that and, and done it in a way that keeps us still at a place where our, our budget, we're doing very well and we're able to provide this for our students. So I think that that is one of the things that also we measured pretty, I don't know how high it is, but it's one of the things that was measured and, and is one of the things that I remarked on because I think that that is super important as I'm paying back my student loans and watching my siblings pay back theirs and then taking jobs that didn't necessarily require them to have the degrees that they do.
Well, I would just add, just correct me on my numbers for last year, for just, I guess this last year, but during our tenure, we had the highest graduation rate and the third highest, correct?
Yes.
So I think I have a lot, says a lot in self-fair that, you know, we made strides there and still some gaps to get, get higher. But, you know, those improvements and we broke 80% for the first time, correct? So those are outstanding, I think, seems for our district, we're at and show where we could go to, so.
And I just want to add to that, and then you can go, Mike, I promise, that her humility with that is that she will be the first to say that she doesn't do this by herself, that it's a team.
Yep.
Even to like last year where we were financially, her team didn't get the raise that she wanted them to be able to have. So she didn't take a raise because she wanted to be part of her team. And I'm going to stop because I'm going to.
Holy, I'm going to start bringing extra Kleenex, so, all right, Mike, go ahead.
I think Dr. Lindeman, in, to kind of continue what Angie was saying, she brings the administrative team along with her and keeps them not only informed, but guide them in a direction that continues us all to improve as a district. I think the performance pay is something that should be used in many different fields and job positions around the country, not just superintendent's pay, including potentially our other staff members in the future. And I think that's being worked on, I think that's a good thing to be able to recognize an employee for their performance on the job and be able to recognize them through advancing their, their career opportunities in their job payment as well. And I'll have more to say later.
All right. Is everybody, does anybody have anything further? So clearly, Dr. Lindeman, we're not without words this evening, so. Yes. Then I think we do have some, some more things that, Mike, you're going to add on. Okay, I won't, I won't go there. So with that being said, all those in favor of approving the three-year contract extension with the superintendent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
I'll say comments later too. No, no, that's okay. And I actually was going to talk at the end, but it seems appropriate to say a couple of comments now. First of all, I just, you know, it's, it's humbling to hear the comments, so I just, I really appreciate that. Those, and I think Angie nailed it when she said, I'll be the first to say I don't do this on my own. I really truly love what I do and we have three amazing people sitting up here and, you know, a thousand more sitting, you know, elsewhere. So we, we do this together and I, I absolutely love what I do. And I think that's maybe the part that people will see about me is the passion that I have for Waterloo schools and, and most of all, for our students. So I appreciate the vote of confidence. It's, it's a privilege to lead and I thank you for it.
Thank you. All right. Well, that concludes the action items on our agenda this evening, but it does take us down then to our financial reports, which is for information only, and I will turn it over to Michael Coughlin.
Thank you. This really is a preliminary snapshot of what we're going to be addressing next month, our next board meeting, excuse me, where, when, as the old board is finished and the new board comes on, that's one of the things that is part of the annual meeting, is to look at the performance of the previous year financially. So we will have the Certified Annual Report, the Treasurers Report and some analysis of that and then looking into 1718 coming up at the next board meeting. But I wanted to give you just some preliminary figures, so you had something to kind of build on as we saw, as those reports come out to you. We've been busy in the business office the last six, six months. We had the preliminary audit in early August. All of the annual reports are due this Friday to the state. And then the final audit starts the week after that, so things have been busy. But I did want to, want to show you and point out a couple of things. The first page is you have, the page numbers are kind of, are kind of covered there, but it's page 26 to 29 is a summary by month of all the revenues for all the different funds. And the majority of the general fund is on page 26 and half of 27. And this is just the revenue side. So the revenue came in at just under $130 million. If you look over the total, kind of in the middle of the page there for the general fund before Activity Fund starts, was a little bit lower than what the budget was. There was a couple of issues with that. We always have a little less come in for state aid because the state takes part of that to run a couple of internal programs. One's a juvenile home and there's a couple other minor ones that chip away at our part, but we still get the authority for that. Title I was not spent to its full capacity, so it had some money to carry over. So that was a little less than what we were anticipating, all of it. And then Medicaid was a little bit less than what we were looking at. There is some changes taking effect with that where we think that number will be strong for 1718 and the years beyond. But when you look at this report, the far-left column has the actual for 1516. So you can compare that to the actual for 1617 on the right. And it did go up by about a million one. Then you have all the other, all of the other funds, the Activity Fund, Management Fund. I did want to point out the Capital Projects Fund, Fund 33 at the bottom of page 27. $10,930,000 came in for this year's penny sales tax. So that gives you an idea of how much, but that's not all the penny revenue. About $800,000 of it is interest coming off of that QSCB. So it's about right at $10 million that we're getting per year from the, the penny sales tax. Then there's also PEPAL and Debt Service and Nutrition and Central Print. But we will go into that much more at the next board meeting. And then if you look on page 30 through 33, then you have a summary by month of all the different object codes in the general fund. And I did want to look at the bottom of page 33. 30 through 33 is just the general fund. And when you get to the bottom, or kind of the half-page of page 33, there's a Fund 10 total and then there's a summary total again with, with all of salaries together and benefits and so forth. It isn't broken down by object code. But what I wanted to show was that with the budget planning for 1617, we had cut the budget to pare back on some things, but also with that, spending came in lower than what we expected. And we were projecting it during the year and we can project a lot of things pretty accurately. And the end of the year of just the, the final payments for tuition out for special ed is a really hard one to predict, especially with River Hills, open enrollment into other districts. So that one's a little more difficult. And for my conservative bone in my body, I always kind of hold back a little bit to just make sure that we're not overdoing it. But when you look at the 1516 expenditures, it was $125,891. The year before that, in 1415, it was $125,831. So we had stayed flat for two years. And then in 1617, we actually dropped $3.8 million. So with revenues going up a little bit and expenditures going down from the year before, we actually have a good financial position. Now, from that standpoint, there's a lot of things going on in 1718 and the years beyond. So that really does give us a platform to go forward of saying, how do we manage and, and shape financially the district to provide for the educational activities that we have going on? So that really is the focus for this year and that's already been starting. But it always is an eye-opener of what really happens as school starts and what's going to happen in the current year. And then. And then we have many more things to come down the road. So I will get into that a little bit more as we do the final reports next board meeting. And if you look at 34 through 37, you've got all the other funds that talk about, that outline what we've spent. And all of them came in very consistently to what we're expecting. I didn't do the cash balances, the one that you normally see first, just for sake of time of all the other things that were going on. But if you look at page 37 in the graphs and the major funds, you can see what the bank statement balances were at June 30th. And those are going to reflect very closely what the cash balances are on the books as far as after the revenues and expenditures. But we'll get into that. So you can see, as you look over the last three years, that we have improved in the general fund. The management fund has stayed at a comfortable level as far as our liability and property insurance. Sales tax fund, we've built that up a little bit to $6.7 million at the end of June, but we did have one payment in July of that $5 million bond, and that's now paid off. That was a $3 million payment. So that 6.7 is really 3.7. But then that will build as we go forward, moving into the next project with CTE. So the PEPAL fund is staying, that fluctuates a little bit just with timing, but we have a five-year plan with that that keeps us in a positive light with what we can do on projects from year to year. So this just gives you some preliminary data if you want to look at it, and if you have questions, certainly I can answer that now. Or if you want to see something a little more detailed when I prepare that for the next board meeting, let me know. But we'll get into it with some more exhibits at the next board meeting.
And a PowerPoint?
And a PowerPoint.
Yes.
Just to comment on a couple of items on page, what is it? 32. The top item there is kind of interesting. The student transportation cost is actually a SCOSH lower than in total cost than last year. So basically, the $150,000 normal increase was offset by routing increases or efficiency improvements and some other things. I always like to keep an eye on how are we doing on our non-classroom costs? Are we controlling those?
Well, is that, that was the first full year that the bus garage was moved? Or was that the second year?
I think it's the first full year.
This is the first full.
The first full year. So we were hoping to see around $200,000 effect.
Okay.
So we came pretty close. And that's not factoring in how many routes are actually were apples-to-apples. You know, there's always a little bit of, and CTE would be part of that as well. So there was some, there's always a little bit of fluctuation in programs from one year to the next.
If we can keep, you know, total dollars the same or less, that's a win typically on student transportation, as long as we continue to provide the same service. And then the other thing I looked at is all the energy. If you add those up, I did it quick and dirty. It looks like we budgeted about $3 million and spent about $2 million. That's always a, that's an efficiency play, but also, you know, it's one of those things that can be variable and outside our control. So we need to kind of always put a little bit there, but we came out really well there as well. So those are just two of the non-classroom activities that looks like doing really well.
Student transportation, that include everything?
What's that?
Student transportation include everything?
Everything. Student activity trips, regular routes, special ed routes.
Athletic trips.
Yep.
Good work, everybody.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to note that roughly 60% of the general fund budget is salaries, and if you include employee benefits, it jumps to 80%. So the vast majority of this budget is spent at the salary and benefits level, which is where it should be.
And that's consistent with most school districts, but absolutely good to note. Anything further for Mr. Coughlin? We'll look forward to next, I can't wait for two weeks. Thanks. I love the financial presentation. It's great. So every time you do it, I learn something new, Mr. Coughlin, I promise. So, all right. Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, I'm looking at the time because I'm gonna apologize in advance. I actually have several items. So first of all, I actually, if you look at the calendar and you note that today is September 11th, and I just couldn't help but make a comment about safety and how historical perspective really impacts how we do business. And so with September 9/11, I think that it's important that we remember the incident and the significance of the incident and all the families whose lives were changed. And then, of course, you go into the tragedies of, you know, whether it's fires or earthquakes and certainly hurricanes. There's just a lot going on right now, and so I think we remember, we remember everybody else, and that's not necessarily a superintendent report, but it's just something I wanted to make sure that we highlighted. I mentioned a couple of comments about contract, but I really, absolutely do thank you for extending my contract. There is definitely work to be done. I do believe that we have accomplished quite a bit, but there is so much to do. And so now with a new contract, we, I get my, I roll up my sleeves and we get back to work because there is so much to do. But thank you very, very much for that extension. I have actually had the privilege this last week of, well, actually, this year, I have been spending a lot of time at our high schools. And Dr. McNulty has also been spending a lot of time with our high schools. We had a retirement last year of somebody who really, Dr. Debbie Lee spent, was our director of high schools, and with her absence, we've actually kind of restructured a little bit. And so we both have been taking a very active role in high schools and monitoring progress and discussing plans and looking at their school improvement plans. And so I think that that's worth noting. I actually had the opportunity to spend a couple hours this morning out at Expo High School Alternative Center and taking a look at the programs that they have. And I actually had the opportunity to interview about 25 students. And I'm going back for another 90 minutes toward the end of the week because I just didn't get through with the walkthroughs that I wanted to do today, so I'm gonna go back again. You know, I think it's, I think it's a building maybe that we don't, or schools that we don't talk about so much, but I really was so excited what I heard from the students, and the alternative programming that we offer to students is needed. It's necessary. It's impactful for the students who are there and listening to stories of students who say things like, you know, "Here was my path," and then "This was something that absolutely was helpful to me." I really appreciated that. Now, that doesn't mean that there is not room for growth because there clearly is, and that probably goes for every single building. Matter of fact, I know it goes for every single building. But I really appreciated the opportunity to talk with the students out there and with Dr. McNulty and I looking at the high schools and really making sure that we have a system of schools instead of just, you know, a school system where we're really looking at being in sync and having, meeting the needs of all the kids. I think that's really something I wanted to mention to you that we're really looking at right now. I think my, I just have two more comments. Congratulations to Central. I was really excited for them tonight, and I just think we have so many great things going on. And I do believe that we are working very hard to make sure that Waterloo Schools is a great place to work. And so I loved the comments where people made comments about, "We're a family. We know what it takes to make a difference for kids." And this was, I just, I won't say who this is, but it was just, I had a teacher who I'd heard something really great about from a parent today, so I took a moment to email him today. And he's new to Waterloo Schools, and this was his response. It doesn't necessarily matter, although now you know that it was a man because I used "he," but here's what he said. "It's the best, coming to Waterloo is the best move I have ever made. It's like a family here. There's a genuine willingness to help a fellow staff member. I'm really impressed with that." Thank you for your email. So I think when we talk, Dr. Smith has talked many times about having Waterloo Schools be on the list of Cedar Valley's best places to work. I make note of that today because I think the concept of job satisfaction is an interesting one because sometimes people equate job satisfaction with happiness and easy work and fun. My definition of job satisfaction has always been a job worth doing, a job that's doable, being valued, being heard. And so when I listen to the Central teachers talking here today, I hope that it's across the district where teachers feel that they are valued, where paras, where food service workers, where bus drivers, where custodians feel like they are valued and they know their worth to this district and to, more importantly, to our students. I just, I think that is a big deal. We have groups of people that we monitor all along. One thing that we're adding this year, Dr. Smith and I had decided that we are gonna actually go out and visit and observe all of our brand-new teachers, which is no small feat. We've done that for years where we go out and we see new teachers and we talk with them, but we've never done it with strategic intention like we are this year. So going out to talk with new teachers, to watch them, to give them feedback, to listen to their story. There's something called onboarding and to, you know, we want to make sure that we do a good job bringing them on board with our staff. And so those are kind of fun things when we, they're important things. And so I just, I wanted to just mention that tonight. I think those are, that's a big deal. Another way that we really listen to our staff, and in a week or so, we will be inviting every single employee of Waterloo Schools to take part of, in our focus groups, to really tackle some issues. We had some changes in Chapter 20. When we were talking about my contract, you made note of some of the challenges that we had to tackle. We are inviting staff members to come in and visit with us about a variety of topics that were potentially contractual but then couldn't be contractual anymore, or we weren't, they weren't contractual anymore. So having staff have an opportunity to voice their opinions, to give feedback, and that's all staff members because every single person matters and they have really good feedback. So that's another thing that's coming up. So I think those are all, you know, when we talk about Central and the happiness factor and the job satisfaction and the new teachers and the role that they play and the focus groups that are coming up, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about our staff and how we are really trying to connect with staff because when staff feels valued and they do a good job, the kids are really the recipients of that work, and that's really where it's at. It's really not about adults. It really is not. So that was just one thing. And then I'm gonna close it up with, I've been at this for six minutes, sorry. It's longer report than usual. But I wanted to just make note, I believe tonight is the last full meeting for two of our board members because they, now, don't cry. So we had an opportunity, yeah. So I just wanna, I just wanna make a comment. This is the last full meeting. They will be back next time. They do a partial meeting, and then we actually do the changing of the guards for the newly-elected candidates. But we have Mike Kinsey, who has been on the board for a number of years, was actually on the board and then was off the board and then came back on the board. And so, and Angie has been on the board for three years and was elected four years ago, sorry, I'm back on old terms, four years. And both of them, I think, have just added immensely to the board. And I think this board has really found their stride in working together and using each other's strengths. I think the beauty of this board is that everybody comes with a different lens, and everybody comes with different strengths. And together, we synergize, and we are able to make good decisions for kids. It doesn't mean that we always have unanimous votes, and I quite honestly don't believe that we should always have a unanimous vote. You know, sometimes we do, but sometimes we don't. And I think that Mike, and I'm gonna speak specifically about Mike, I think that Mike has a strong attention to detail. Mike has some strong areas where he has experiences in. His chosen profession has really helped him serve on the facilities committee. He's done some, brought some things to our attention as far as the wellness committee. He's really driven our work. And board members don't necessarily do the work, but they absolutely can add value to the work. They can sometimes refocus us when we need to be refocused, and I think Mike has done all of that, and he's done it extremely well. And so the commitment that you have done on this board, the committee meetings that you come to, sometimes people think that it's just twice a month that you come to board meetings, and that just simply is not the case. If we counted up all of the meetings that you had, I don't even know where we would be on that. So I thank you personally for your role that you've played on this, for the job that you've done for the students of Waterloo Schools, for the families that you've served extremely well from the seat that you are in right now. Angie, you know, we had a little chance to get together and over the weekend and just kind of celebrate our two outgoing board members, but one of the things I said at that time that I want to say on the air is that Angie has a lens that nobody else on this board has. And so she can add a perspective that, of something that others might not think of. And so she's also a crier, so we're gonna miss her sensitive side, but I think that just shows how much you care. And so I always tell people, never, ever, ever apologize for crying in the name of kids because I think that, I think, and I never do, and I'm a social crier, so when you cry, I sometimes cry with you. But I think it's all in the name of kids because we care so deeply about them. So from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate everything that you've added to the board. I think you've done an amazing job. I know that you have told us what a steep learning curve. It's interesting, right? Because it's different. You think you know what a board does, but you don't always know, and that probably goes for all of us. So thank you for everything that you've added and for the lens that you have brought and for your care for the kids. So thank you for all of that. And that concludes my, that was 10 minutes. I think that's the longest superintendent report ever. So, thank you.
Absolutely fine. I'm gonna shake it up just a little bit because it is Mike and Angie's last meeting, and I'm gonna let the two of you have the first word tonight from board comments. And I don't know if you guys want to thumb wrestle for it, or if I, I'm gonna, all right, I'm shooting it over to Mike. I'm going to Mike then. So I think it's important we hear from the two of you first tonight, so.
Well, I'm humbled by the position that I've been given and the service that I've been able to offer to the community. I've got a few thank-yous. I'm not the best public speaker, so I'm gonna read a little bit here. Thank you to the past administration and former board members for guidance with school board roles, responsibilities, and activities when I was first elected in 2006. Expectations didn't always meet up with reality. Policies, regulations, and administration of a large urban district have many challenges, but the main focus has always been on doing what's best for students. And you had echoed those same comments. I would guide the incoming board members to follow in my footsteps and accept guidance from the sitting board and the administration because they will help you transition and become a good board member yourself. Thank you to the current administration for continuing the work of improving our district along many fronts, including student improvement in all of our buildings, our signature programs, which give all students the opportunity to succeed while they are with us, and more importantly, after graduation. I thank this administration for improving the image of our district within our community as well as around the state. Thank you to my current fellow board members. Angela, you brought your passion for student success and often brought a unique perspective to our discussions, using your own personal experiences to shape the discussion, and that's very much appreciated. I think that could be said about all of us, but you did a very good job in that respect. Jessie, I see your passion with student success and often brought, excuse me, and the health and wellness of our district. And we'll continue to keep those issues and thoughts of the board and the administration in the future. I hope you continue to keep the health and wellness in the best interest of our district. Sue, I appreciate your connection with the community in many ways. You also bring a unique perspective to the discussion and bring information from your constituents, which helps all of us and helps the district. Serving as our vice, board vice president is another role that you have gone above and beyond, and I appreciate that. That's something that isn't always the best, hardest, easiest job to do. Rhonda, not here, but I think that she have added a post-secondary perspective as well. perspective as well to the board and, and a passion for inclusive opportunities for all children. Shanley, it takes a special dedication to this district to lead as you have. You followed in the footsteps of our past board president, Mike Young, and that was a hard act to follow. You make us all proud to have you as our president. You work well with Dr. Lindeman and are always available if needed. Lyle, where do I start? You do so, you do so much on your own with research, analysis, going above and beyond the call of duty. Your experience with more than twenty years of service has been a benefit to this board and on countless occasions, your observations, perspective and forethought have shaped our policy, our goals and our expectations for staff as well as students of this district. So thank you for that. Thank you Pam, our board secretary. You keep things organized and keep us all well informed of the issues at hand and as well as upcoming schedules. I have utmost faith with the curriculum and the financial position of this district, and that's attributed to the full administration under Dr. Lindeman's charge. And most importantly, I'd like to thank Dr. Jane Lindem and our superintendent. You provide us board members' current information we need to have the best school board we can be, to be the best school board we can be. Your passion for your job, this district and our children is obvious to anyone who sees you in action. I hope you continue to serve in this role for many years to come. I have enjoyed this opportunity to serve my community and hope to be of further assistance in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, Angie.
I should have went first. I did not write a speech. It's, it's not usually, but I would, I would echo, I mean, we, we did on Friday, I didn't anticipate that we would have time tonight to be sharing things. But I absolutely agree that this, this board has been absolutely amazing. The diversity of this board makes the opportunity for us to be thinking about all students at all times possible. I'm very, very confident with the two people's names who should only be on the ballot, replacing Mike and I and still be in, having, having those different voices be heard. Some of the passions that Mike has around athletics and PE and things of that nature that won't go missing with one of the candidates. The issues that I have where I want to make sure that all students, regardless of what side of the bridge they live on, regardless of how much money their parents have or don't have in their pockets, won't go missing with one of the candidates that's also on the ballot. So I am, I'm happy to be stepping off, knowing that it's going to be in great, great hands. And it's definitely by God's plan that, that we're able to do that. With that said, if you have not voted today, you must go vote tomorrow. It is imperative for our students, all of our students, that your voice is heard. If you have a student in school, not in school, it's the future of our city depends on how well we do for our students. So you must vote. And, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Angie. All right, Lyle.
And I'm going to miss Sue.
Yeah, I don't know what you two are getting into down there. All right. I know I started with Jesse last time, so I'm going to, now we'll catch up. So we'll go to Lyle. Thank you.
I want to thank both Mike and Angie. You've provided really great service to the schools and therefore by extension to all the students in it. So I really have enjoyed working with you on the board. And then just congratulations, Dr. Lindeman, on your new contract. You certainly deserve it. So we're happy to have a, now we have an experience. Oh, how many? Three? Three?
This is four.
This is your fourth year.
Starting with Miguel, going to four.
So.
Veteran.
Yep. We now have a veteran superintendent, so we're happy about that.
Excellent. All right, Sue, Jesse, who's going to go?
I'll go first. No, I just also wanted to thank Mike and Angie for your services. It's been a pleasure to get to know each of you and, and agree and disagree with both of you. And, and I just wish you best if you find other volunteer activities. I know Angie already has and Mike has plenty, I'm sure. So we will miss you, but you do not have to be strangers. So back to your little business, I just wanted to reiterate and echo what Jane mentioned about the focus groups that are coming up. And if you did not hear specifically what she said, but these meetings are for all staff. So this is your opportunity to bring your voice to the table. If you were upset, concerned, if you tell your fellow teacher you're upset and concerned about something that happened with a personnel issue or something, this is your opportunity to come to the table and to bring it to the table and not just tell your neighbor. So I just appreciate that opportunity allowed for these focus groups to happen. And I, I really hope we have a hundred people there. I do. I mean, and we'll have to break it to smaller groups, but this is the chance for your voice to be heard. So when that information comes out, please look at it and come to the meetings because we want to hear what, you know, it, in many situations, it's the people that offer a perspective from where they're at, which helps to form a perspective and a betterment of where we all are at. So I just ask for you to consider that and to do that. And then also, just a little bit what you said about Expo. And I true, truly like that in our district, that we do provide that alternative learning environment for students. And like you say, it isn't something that's always brought up. But there are many kids that that is the perfect place, that they find their niche, that they find a place where they can learn. And I just appreciate the district offering an alter-, alternative environment like that. So, and then going forward, I read a very interesting article about propane buses. And I think that's probably more up your alley, Lyle. So I thought maybe research on that. You could bring it back to me. Thank you.
Okay, Jesse.
Right. So ignore my voiceover here. I'm a little bit hoarse today. But, uh, see, been, gosh, it was a busy week, busy weekend. I spent, seemed like every day was a different group of kids, different group of people until Sunday. And Sunday I didn't do much of anything. But, you know, Thursday I got to be around, you know, we have a combined girls cross-country team and most races, boys, both boys in the same place. And, you know, you get and meet these kids, you hang around, you see them, you talk to them, what their, you know, what their careers are. It was a good afternoon. And then Friday, we had our going away thing and then, you know, off to the football game. And just congratulations to both football teams. I can't, I don't know when it would be the last time both teams started two and one. So congratulations to them. I think that's a, a good start to season for both programs. And then, and then Saturday I got the opportunity to spend time with a band fundraiser, Westside Band fundraiser. And probably so, car washes here, you know. But in rest, you know, it was such a diverse group, you know. You think of what all the stuff we had out for band and just a wonderful conversation. You talk, you know, you hear them talk about their career plans. Some are seniors, some are not underclassmen. I've really, one conversation, a young lady who's just a tremendous worker and just listened to a little bit her story and just was, just amazing to say, one, the diversity in our, our school district and how within that diversity, so many kids can achieve so many great things that, you know, it was just, like I said, it was amazing time just to kind of step back and reflect of, of our students and what they can accomplish, what their goals are, what their dreams are. And so many things that are just great. So just some good moments, just seeing what the future's like for, you know, us as our, all our children get older. So.
Thanks, Jesse. I, I want to echo again the sentiments to both Mike and Angie. It's been a pleasure working with you. And we'll have more in store for you at the next meeting, don't you worry. So the roast will commence. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So you should prepare a speech for that. Exactly, exactly. So I just want to share a couple of congratulations. You know, I like my visual aids. And so yesterday, in yesterday's paper, there was a, a nice little blurb about one of our staff members, Teresa Steiber-Moncada, who actually, Steiber, excuse me, who has been named the Iowa State Education Association Para-educator for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And we were able to honor her on opening day with that. But there was a nice picture of her in yesterday's celebration section in the Courier. And also our famed superintendent, who I just want to say again, as I talked about earlier in the meeting, about the open door policy and such, and the fact that she would take the time. So our bus drivers met a safety goal of having a hundred days without an incident. And Jane made lasagna for the entire group, which was close to eighty people plus?
A hundred.
About a hundred, right. And so I had multiple people yesterday at church. My own dad said, "Did Jane make that all by herself?" And I said, "She sure did." So I'm just really impressed by that. And I, and I think, you know, our, our bus drivers were very endeared with their tummies. So they, they really appreciate that. So thank you very much for making that happen. So I do want to remind everyone again, I know Angie mentioned it, that tomorrow is election day. So if you, if you don't know where you need to vote, you can go to the Black Hawk County website and you can type in your address and, and it will, and your street number and all of that. And it will tell you where your polling place is. So please do get out and vote because it does matter. And then our next board meeting will be in two weeks on the twenty-fifth. And we will be honoring our outgoing board members and welcoming our new incoming board members. And I think that is it, except for the fact that I need to entertain a motion to adjourn over here with the sidekicks.
So moved.
All right, Angie. And second by Sue, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Good evening. Thank you.
Don't interrupt.
I couldn't let the two of you do it.